President, except Thomas, Councilman Thomas McCarthy. David Flynn here?
Yes.
Want to come, David? You got a dog in there?
I think you're supposed to check them at the door.
David had discussed with me an application called the Jesuwalie application. You know what that is?
Mm-hmm.
And you thought that you wanted a discussion with the town board about it. Your honor.
This is a petition to rezone property on the Lawrence Road area from R-21 and Light Industry to Garden Apartments. It was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, and they sent it back as incomplete, and they would not review it. They said they wanted four things before they would make a recommendation or decision on this. They wanted some kind of a, what they call a block study. They want an environmental assessment of what's buried on the property. Are you familiar with the property? You might be.
We all are, I think.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm trying to remember what the other two things were.
Do they want it from the town or from the applicant?
They always want it from the town. The town, in turn, can request the applicant or provide it itself.
Block study, what else?
An environmental assessment of the property, meaning an analysis of the waste that's buried there. Just bear with me when we find the other two things. Patrick, do you have your phone on?
I don't use it, I don't even know if I got it. Don't have it, I haven't.
There you go. You're calling him, aren't you?
They want a traffic impact analysis and an affordable housing analysis to determine whether or not the proposal is intended to comply with the New York State Long Island Workforce Housing Act. So they just basically sent it back for more information. Then in July, this was in June, I believe, no, April 1st of last year. And then in July, the town planning board had a hearing, and as you know, they recommend to you. The petitioner, the planning department, I had recommended denial, but the petitioner requested the planning board adjourn it, stating that the property next door was the subject of a rezoning petition, and the town board... He gave the impression that the town board pos-decked it. I have the impression that the town board has not.
He, who, who's he?
He's the petitioner's attorney, Vinnie Tramaco.
For Jesuwalie?
For Jesuwalie, right. Jesuwalie's attorney. My understanding is that the applicant might be doing an EIS before it gets decked, that there's an assumption that it would be pos-decked. I'm not sure on that. I'll have to find out.
Which property, Jesuwalie or KPE2?
KPE2.
Okay.
So just to recap, the application that we're talking about is Jesuwalie, and right next to it is KPE2.
Right.
KPE2 came in somewhat earlier. And at the July planning board hearing, Jesuwalie's attorney said, please, don't recommend denial, please adjourn it. We want to do an environmental impact statement. We know one will need to be done, and worth to that effect. So the planning board adjourned the matter. A couple of months later, I sent the town board a memo saying, it seems as though this petition is sort of stalled, and that the planning board adjourned it, the Suffolk County Planning Commission has done nothing with it. And I had recommended that the town board have a hearing, just to try to move it off the dime, so to speak, one way or the other. If you have the hearing and you think it's a bad idea, that it's not good for the town, presumably you would deny it. If you thought it had merit, then it would move through the next processes of SECR and the four studies that the county wants.
We couldn't do anything on either property, though, am I correct? Until such time as we see an environmental study.
Well, you can't approve anything.
Correct.
Without finalizing the SECR process. But if you had a hearing, and you thought, like, you know, this is clearly not good for the town, denial doesn't require any kind of environmental review.
Well, do they do an environmental review consistent with what the town would require in having an environmental review?
Well, they would have to. If the town board had a hearing, closed the hearing, and then said, gee, maybe this has merit, you would presumably contact DEW and say, please initiate the SECR process on this. And DEW would basically see to it that everything is complied with.
Most of us are very familiar with that property.
Right.
Goes back, way back into the early 70s. To my knowledge, it was once a superfund site.
Right.
Then was moved off the superfund site, over to the DHD.
Right.
I have something in my mouth, I'm sorry. And then they ordered, I believe, from my recollection, all kinds of excavation and stuff to be moved out of there, correct?
I'm not familiar with any material leaving the property. I know that DEC required a cap on the northeast corner, and there's a kind of a drainage basin over there. They had an onsite monitor for a couple of years. But I'm not sure that material actually left the property. I think it's...
Well, somebody ought to get the DC report.
Right.
Is that possible, Russell?
Absolutely.
I mean, there was always, any conversations I remember we've ever had.
Right.
Was that property was unbuildable in terms of the subsoil is not, can't sustain anything.
Right.
What's the plan, the government's recommendation?
Well, we recommend, I recommended denial for a number of reasons. One of which had to do with the presence of waste on the property already.
The denial prior to hearing it?
Correct. Yeah, we normally make a recommendation based on the information that we have prior to a hearing. And based on what we had, we recommended denial for a number of reasons. One of which having to do with the fact that the property was used for burying waste for many years.
And you're talking about Jesuwalie?
Correct.
So if you recommend denial on that, how do we proceed with KPE2? What are they, still going LI to R-21?
LI to R-21, correct.
So you would not, we would not, I assume, want to approve an application to build homes next to the Jesuwalie property, which we're recommending denial?
It's two different pieces of property that were taken care of. KPE2, if anything, the only thing really that's left is sand. They just stole sand. So there's just...
Correct.
There was no dumping going on.
No, no.
Actually, there was in the past, and that was cleaned up.
On KPE2, I understand that. But to approve that zone change, to build homes, we're once again building homes next to a site that you're recommending denial on because of contaminants. That's what this mess is all about in the first place.
Right.
We built homes all along Plymouth next to an industrial area where the property was being illegally used. Why would we want to do that again? And I think your predecessor said that those two applications should be, he recommended, married. I agree with him. We should not be building homes again.
Right.
For sale next to that Jesuwalie property until such time as we determine what are we going to do with that Jesuwalie property?
Right.
Jesuwalie wants to put up apartments?
Correct. I think he's fluid, I think he's flexible in what he wants to put up.
Rental apartments, I assume. Not condos where you buy, rental apartments?
He has represented in the past that owner occupancy was an alternative. The latest one is for RMGA, that garden apartment zoning, but under that zoning, it doesn't have to be rental.
Do they still have to file, do the 10% for work for sales?
That works on both rental and owner occupancy.
Russell, do you have anything to say about this here?
Well...
Can you say? Why don't you move up here?
Sure.
And who would undertake the cost of these, four items required by the county?
Well, I'd like to respond to that.
Sure.
I could. One of the issues that the boards should consider is that oftentimes, an applicant wants to do an EIS in order to keep a project alive and potentially approvable. There is a downside to the municipality in that even though we do require an EIS filing fee, it is, an EIS is quite consumptive of town resources that could be spent on other projects. It's a roundabout way of saying that if the project ultimately is one which you would deem inappropriate for the town, to go through the EIS process costs the town money and lost opportunity on other issues, manpower available for other tasks. That's it in a nutshell. We do take a $25,000 review fee for an EIS. An applicant generally pays six figures for the preparation of an EIS. And just speaking outside of the town of Smithtown in general, in this field, there are a lot of EISs in process throughout the region where the projects have a very low, if any, chance of ultimately being approved. And my recommendation would be, if the project is not something that you're interested in, not to send it to SECR.
Why wouldn't they, why wouldn't we require just a pos-deck on that applicant? Let him go do his EIS, present it to you, for your review, and then if they think they can make a profit excavating, removing material, if that's the case, and build homes. I mean, we kind of steered this whole thing, this application bolted them into a residential direction, didn't we? I mean, we were looking at Light Industry with an outside storage component. There was no support for that. And then I believe we kind of pushed those two applicants, even though they were under a court injunction, to go towards residential. So that's what they're doing.
Well, but the petitions, at least this one, is to increase the density of residential that he would be allowed, put more homes there.
Right.
So, I mean, you really do have a policy issue which you identified before, which is whether or not you want to put residents, new residents, in proximity with these properties in past uses.
Well, I wouldn't support any kind of split. That's myself, that's only my opinion. I'm not, because we, that's how we got into this position in the first place, building homes right up against those kind of properties. I don't think we would, I wouldn't want to do it again. If it's either both applications or residential component, and we make them go through what they have to go through as far as the environmental study goes, and build residential components on it, we'll move to some other kind of development on it.
Well, I understand exactly that. However, it's been intimated that waste has to be excavated to facilitate this building of these homes.
Well, that's been my belief for five to 10 years. I believe the former town engineers, to both of them, and the current town engineer, believed that the waste would have to be removed for structural soundness for construction.
And why would we want to impact a neighborhood, a large neighborhood, with odors and every other aspect of removing waste that's been buried for 20 or 30 years?
Noise and truck traffic and so on.
What if we were to deny this, not hear this application?
Well...
Matthew, do you want Phil to get in on this?
At this point, given the litigation, I'd like to go to executive session.
Okay.
Russ, are you kind of saying, because of the cost of the permits and all those costs that you were mentioning, if this is not favorable, doesn't seem to be favorable, why let them incur this cost? Is that what you were...
That's part of it.
Yeah.
But there's also, there's uncovered municipal costs for going through the process as well. And that's what I'm trying to draw the board's attention to.
Pretty big bucks, right?
Yes, I mean, on the private side, the investment in pursuing an environmental impact statement is significant.
Yeah.
It's usually six figures alone for the impact statement preparation, then additional experts for testimony, et cetera. An applicant pursuing an EIS process is making a substantial investment. Beyond that, there's a municipal side, an investment in time that's devoted to that as opposed to other projects that the board may wish to pursue, that's just not covered.
And so if you can determine ahead of time, say, hey, this is going to be a waste of money, why should we make anybody incur that? That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Got a point.
Go back to what I said earlier. It was a superfund site.
What does that mean?
Well, the federal government declared that some contaminated, that they spent money on superfund money to deal with it, correct?
Well, Superfund Comprehensive Environmental Response and Liability Act does a number of things. First, there was an identification of sites that might be contaminated based upon past used stumping, et cetera. Those sites are designated, and this site was designated as one of those potential sites. Then there's a second phase where they do some more in-depth review, looking at the property, and properties can be delisted subsequently to say, all right, there's no real evidence to support the idea that there's hazards in the form of, you know, significant amount of chemicals or things of that nature. And I believe this site was ultimately delisted after having been listed as a superfund site. That doesn't mean that it's clean, it just means that it doesn't meet the standards for superfund.
For the federal.
Right.
Right.
And it doesn't mean that it's buildable because of buried waste, the different standards.
But then, my recollection is then the DEC took over that investigation.
Well, the, yeah, there's a DEC role and a federal role in superfund.
David's correct, that portion is capped and covered, and you can't do anything on that parcel.
We have the northeast corner, about five acres, I think.
Right.
Can you show me where that is?
So is his intention to build his homes on the entire site?
That's not clear. It keeps, it's like moving target. So over here, see this little...
That's what's capped?
Yeah, that semicircle.
Not here, not these areas.
Who's the attorney for KPG, whatever?
KPE2? I don't remember.
Also Tramaco.
John O'Malley, probably.
Yeah, okay, I was wondering.
Well, I know that at one point, I believe, Mr. Tramaco had made a presentation on behalf of KPE2.
Yeah, he did.
So...
So why don't you discuss it with the town attorney in executive session?
Yep. We'll do that, but we have other matters to attend to before we do that. And I didn't, did I get to answer the question, who pays for the cost of these studies here that the county wants?
That would be put onto the applicant.
Who's the applicant?
The applicant would be responsible for that. And then, if in fact we were to proceed, those studies would be folded into the environmental impact statement, under the titles basically of existing community character. You look at traffic, you look at affordable housing, et cetera.
And Mr. Lutere's business is right next door as well.
And outright denial, you need to discuss that in executive session?
Well, it's going to have an impact on the litigation, so that's why I'd like to discuss it in executive session.
You see, there's an overlap on this petition. Some of this petition includes part of Lutere's petition to rezone to WSI. So, you know, you have the Jesuwalie petition and the Lutere petition like this. So some of them have some common property. If his goes through, it becomes WSI, his meeting Lutere.
Right.
And if it doesn't, it becomes RMGA if this one goes through.
Right.
So there's not even a clear boundary between the two zoning petitions.
RMGA being garden apartments.
Garden apartments, yeah.
Okay.
So, anything else?
We'll wait for that. You might want to stay from that. Did we want to discuss the Lake Avenue zone change?
Okay, sure. Do you want me to start?
Please, yeah.
Another petition to rezone property, I think the board heard it at your last night meeting, is a petition to rezone the back of a corner property on Lake Avenue and Sixth and St. James from R-10 to Central Business. The front half is zoned Central Business, the back half is zoned R-10. The, I had recommended denial. I believe the planning board recommended approval, subject to saving a large tree out front. I made for the board's use a diagram showing what they're allowed to do now and what they would be allowed to do if the rezoning went through. Councilman McCarthy was not here, asked me to come up with an alternative that would allow the property owner more use of their property, but would make a better buffer for the neighbors than denial would. And I think that, I think it's subjective as to where to draw the line on balance. But if you look at the top drawing, that shows what they're allowed to do today. If they've got a special exception to extend parking into a residence zone, there'd be a 47-foot buffer and then 47 feet of parking to the back wall of a building.
And then what, what would be in the front, about the same, it looks like?
About, yeah, there'd be parking in the front.
Okay.
Maybe I'm dense here.
Okay.
The parcel in the front is zoned Central Business.
It's not a separate parcel, but the front half of the parcel is zoned Central Business, right?
Which they can do anything, what's allowed in the central business zoning, correct?
Correct, yes.
They now apply for zone change to take X amount of feet for all of the parcel.
All of the property.
Which is zoned residential.
Correct.
Which provides a backyard, if you will, for the houses that have bought it.
Um, okay.
What's the benefit of changing that zone? Is it detrimental, is it detrimental to the people?
I thought about that, the benefit would seem to be that they'd be more tax-ratable to the town because the building would be so much bigger.
We don't change zones, we've never changed a zone to get tax-radables.
I'm not saying that you did. I was trying to think of what, zoning is supposed to be for a public purpose, not for private property owner's benefit. So I thought hard about, like, well, what's the public benefit here? The only benefit that I could think of is that the building would be about 10% bigger, 20% bigger, and therefore the tax-ratable would be more...
The existing building?
No, no, a proposed building. The existing building is a, is a two-story kind of rundown house. That, I'm sure, would be raised. Sort of a shame, it's very historic-looking, but it's in a state of disrepair, and most people don't like to reuse historic buildings. But if they raise that...
Isn't that historic, that house?
Well, is anything really historic?
I know, it goes on the registry.
It's on the town's list.
It will be if George Washington combed his wig in the mirror, like Aquilus' house.
Is this the current, the one on the top is what it is now?
The current, the top one is what they're allowed to do today.
Today.
Number two is what they would be allowed to do if the zoning petition were approved. So the buffer gets reduced from 47 feet to 10.
And what is this one, 20?
The third one is the one that Councilman McCarthy asked me to come up with, something that would make a better buffer for the neighbors, a better parking layout in the front. And that's the, that's the third one.
This would be further back than the stores that are there?
Yeah, they would line up pretty much about the back with the stores that are there.
Okay.
Pretty much.
But David, I thought I heard at the meeting, the town board meeting, if we do something like this, that they could actually even put up, unless this is changed, a gas station in that area?
True, Central Business allows, say, 20 uses, in round numbers, a couple of dozen uses.
To my mind, this is a zone change.
It is.
It's taking residential property, which right now offers some degree of quiet, quietude for the residents that fund it. Why would we change a zone to accomplish...
You're asking the wrong person. I wrecked him in the file.
No, no, it's a rhetorical question.
Okay.
You don't have to answer that. Why would you change a zone to give a businessperson more land and in doing so, impact residences?
I could see it in a situation, maybe not this one, in a situation where a person couldn't use their property because of the zoning. You would do it where, like, gee, under the existing zoning, the property's unusable. But I don't think that applies.
If you were to change a zone, those people now are left with a 10-foot backyard, is that true?
Correct, that's correct.
Or why would we want to do that?
I don't think you would. I mean, I, the town board actually paid for a consultant to come up with a plan for Lake Avenue in the late 80s, and you actually adopted it, which...
Okay.
The town board has almost never adopted a plan. And that plan doesn't call for 10-foot buffers, it calls for basically the number one, you know, leaving it as is. It's basically a 50-foot buffer, 50 feet of parking into the residence zone. And I guess the board felt that that was a compromise, that the neighbors got a decent buffer and the property owner gets 50 more feet. And the ordinance, zoning ordinance got amended to allow for that. If you look in the zoning ordinance, it talks about that the maximum extent that parking would go back from Lake Avenue and St. James is 50 feet from the business district.
But that building can still be used for a store, commercial use.
Oh, the existing building?
The existing, yeah.
Sure, oh, sure.
It's a little old house, but I mean, it could be fixed up and used. This just allows them to go bigger, which really is not in character with that area.
Right.
I don't have your memo in front of me. What were your reasons for denial?
That it would impact the neighbors, that it would adversely affect them, that it wasn't in concert with the town's plan that you adopted. And I would have to look up to see what else I wrote, if you would. I didn't bring that file. That the property could be used as, is currently zoned, that it would tend to set a precedent. I'm trying to remember if there were others. There were four or five reasons.
It seems to me that the property owner is being a hog. The property that's vacant, with the house on it, is already zoned for business.
Right.
He now wants to take X amount of feet away from the backyard of a number of houses for commercial purposes.
Right.
How is that sensible?
Well, I guess from this property owner's standpoint, they get a 900-square-foot bigger building.
Yeah, but look at the impact upon the lives of people.
Sure, no, I understand.
Who moved next to residential property.
Right.
Why would we do that?
That's a rhetorical question, right?
Sure it is.
Well, the only thing you could find is taxable, tax, tax code, tax rate, which is pennies, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll give you guys a couple of weeks to think about it, and we'll bring it up again. I know that Matthew has many, anybody have anything? Matthew has two or three legal matters, correct?
Right, yeah, contractual matter. And I just want to mention to Matt that if he would get in touch with Robert Murphy, if you will, utilities have gone into a number of subdivisions. Kings Park, I think they're going in off Indian Head Road in Kings Park, they went at the Country Village, installing utilities. It's National Grid up in, off Pulaski, Suffolk County Water, and they've done some extensive tearing up of the roads. Some of those roads were not paved too too long ago, so if you'd get with Robert, I did speak to him, to make sure as soon as we get into the season that they affect the proper repairs, the utilities. Because what they did is temporary patching on all those streets, residential streets, and they're, just for the winter, they've thrown a patch in there. So I want to make sure it gets done correctly, so I explained to Robert I would have you contact him till we make sure that it gets done.
You have a site plan?
Good morning, Peter Hans from the Planning Department. We have one site plan...
We have one site planned for the board to consider this afternoon, acting as the Board of Site Plan Review. It's called Jade Nazaro, Phase Two. This is a second pad building on the site at the northwest corner of 347 and Terry Road. There's an existing 7-Eleven opposite the Watermill Inn. We're recommending approval with five conditions. First condition, that they obtain the necessary permits from the Building Department. The second, that they obtain a highway work permit from Suffolk County Department of Public Works. The third condition is that their work coordinate, be coordinated with the New York State Department of Transportation's 347 project. The fourth, that the construction receive authorization of the SWIP, that's the Stormwater Pollution and Prevention Plan from the DEC. And at the fifth, as the applicant shall provide additional landscaping as deemed necessary by the Planning Department in the event that the buffer to the north isn't substantial enough. The applicant has agreed with the conditions. I provided a copy to each of you as well. Building's 4,500 square feet. It was approved as a retail building, I believe it was a two-tenant building. It could be a bank, but as of right now, there's no tenants proposed. The building architecture is supposed to match the 7-Eleven that's also on the site, which we feel is fairly attractive, especially for a 7-Eleven. Board have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to go into executive session.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have the animal shelter, of course, yes.
Yeah, I think you have to, I mean, maybe not all of it, but just for safety purposes, why don't you just give a little synopsis quick and then get back where we were.
Got it. Morning, members of the Town Board. Presented before you are several documents that I just wanted to provide to you in advance of the next Town Board meeting, which we hope to put forward a resolution to adopt the 2016 plan. That consists of two documents, one is the 2015 status report of closed projects and of projects that are still open for 2015 and prior. Also included in your packet is the 2016 through 2020 Recommended Capital Plan and also the proposed funding mechanisms for the plan, which consists of grants and serial bonds. And two other documents are the Schedule of Debt Service. And important to note here is the decline in debt service throughout the years so that our operating budget is not impacted at all. In fact, it's beneficial that it goes down. And the last item in your packet will be the Schedule of Outstanding Serial Bonds that in no time period, unless anything changes in the future, exceed approximately $27 million. And then with an anticipated 4 million per year in borrowing, it gradually levels off to a level that we feel is sustainable to help maintain maintenance of the, of the equipment in the town. And then...
Just a question, how do you come to the conclusion that it levels off? Why don't you anticipate continued borrowing in the amounts as here into the future?
That's, that's a great point. We feel that right now we are borrowing higher than we normally would because of major, three major projects, one being the Marina Bulkhead, the renovation of the animal shelter, and other equipment, particularly the highway. And what we're recommending is that we have a disciplined approach to borrowing and that annually we borrow. And once we get over this hurdle of upgrading our existing facilities and our existing assets, that after that, it's almost a maintenance process where we're maintaining annually and we challenge the board members to review their...
So you don't see large expenditure items such as a Marina repair and the animal shelter?
That might be 20 years out, you know, we're taking care of that, those equipment...
So I mean, once those are done, you don't see any...
No, we're a mature town. I think, I don't think we're looking too much at land acquisition. I don't think we're looking at, you know, anything major. You know, the town is mature, it's a question now of maintaining the streets and roads and which have already been acquired.
And what about soaring down the road?
That, that would...
That could come up.
Absolutely, Councilman.
That could be a major...
And that might be something the Town Board at that time would deviate from this plan.
Okay.
But as Paul has pointed out to me several times, and the supervisor of course too, the town of Smithtown has the lowest outstanding debt of any major town on Long Island. And so, you know, last year it was only 17 million. I'm encouraging the town to rise it up through the next five years or so, up to 27 million, but then it'll gradually peter off.
Don, when we approve the capital budget, and I think I understand, let's just say the animal shelter, 24, 2.4 million. That doesn't, does that mean, that doesn't mean you go out for the 22.4 million this year? You go out for what you're going to use?
Exactly.
But my question to you is, do you get like a bulk rate? Because the rates are so low right now, so if we don't, if we only use 100,000 and we don't use the other whatever million till later on, are we locked into this nice low rate that we have now?
For last year's...
Thinking futuristically, what, how does that work? Do you get like a bulk bonding kind of a rate, or how does that work? That looks like a no.
It's, it's an accurate statement that to the date that you borrow is the rate that you will receive. So for example, last year we received an outstanding rate of 1.99. And of course, we could have borrowed a huge sum of money and been locked in at that rate, but we would have been borrowing and paying for the use of that money that we're not going to use because of the timing in which we can spend it. So that's why I've kind of, it was suggested last year that we borrow for two years' worth at one time.
Is that what we did?
No, we did not. We borrowed for one year because that's all we felt we could spend at a proper rate.
For the debt service?
For the debt service, and also operationally too, for the debt service. So it's almost like dollar-cost averaging with stocks, you know? There's going to be peaks and valleys in the interest rates, and if you just buy through those troughs, you know, I think it'll pretty much level off at a reasonable rate. Likewise, you might adjust your borrowing depending on if interest rates go up very high, we might want to then not be as ambitious in our capital program. And if rates decrease like they did last year, we might want to get more aggressive. But I'm trying to bring the town to a long-range plan of having leveled debt borrowing and a leveled debt outstanding that is sustainable at our, for our operating budget as well as for the renovation and currency of our assets.
And I think in terms of the public listening, when they see a capital project and project budget, they say, oh my God, bazillions of dollars, it's not really happening this year.
That's a great point, absolutely, and that's why we're pacing ourselves in the borrowing. And that's why we were advocating for 4.5 million in 2016 and 6 million in 2017, and then back down to approximately, and the board can adjust it, obviously, at that time.
So take a look, Lynn, so answers your question. Take a look at the animal shelter renovation and construction.
Yeah, I see what they spend and what they're not...
Yeah, we only borrow 750 for 2016 because there's time to do the building.
And the total...
The rest of the borrowing takes place in 2017. And that's the same with the Marina. That's a 35, 3,000, $3,500,000 cost. We will only borrow 200,000 for engineering, et cetera, et cetera, before you undertake the real repair.
Is the actual money going to be borrowed in 2017, or is that...
If you turn to the last page...
Do you use it actually in 2017 and you borrowed it in 2017?
We're trying to, we're trying to borrow the money that we will be using. That's why we provided the 2015 status report, which incidentally was requested at last year's Town Board meeting. You got to change the tape or something.
Now we're done.
Flip it over? Don't make me start again.
Okay.
For of the 2016 through 20 capital plan, you'll see that we're recommending, you'll see the total projects requested amount of $16 million for the five-year period. The 2016 is 5,574,000, the fourth page.
Got a mess. Thank you.
So for the five-year period is 16,220, and in 2016 is 5,574, of which we anticipate grants of 597,000. I think that's a result of Chief Valentine's projects, most of them. And the water district, they directly do it through ratepayer funds, 427,000, so leaving us with 4.5 million that we would borrow for. And in 2017, almost 6 million. And then you'll see in 2018, 19, and 20. Those plans really haven't been stretched out and formulated enough. And incidentally, the board is only approving the 2016 commitment, but it's a way of planning for the future.
The vote is just for 2016.
Yeah.
And that's 5.5 million?
Yes. Also in the write-up, just to highlight what's in the 2016 plan is the animal shelter renovation. This project includes the completion of engineering and design work that was begun in 2015 and the first phase of the construction, amounting to $750,000. Also included in here is the engineering, the rehab of the Long Beach Marina. The project proposed by the Engineering Department would utilize outside consultants and contractors to remove and replace the existing bulkhead, floating docks, gangways, utilities on both sides of the Marina, and an estimated cost of 3.5 million dollars. The project is expected to take about two years to complete. And the timeline is not exact because we're waiting for DEC permitting and also the seasonality of the work. Public safety, town regional fuel facility, Phase One, both Phase One and Two of the project are substantially supported by New York State Local Government Efficiency Program grants. Phase One includes design permitting and installation of two 8,000-gallon fuel tanks at the Smithtown Highway Yard. In addition, the project includes the installation of a modern fuel management system, which automatically tracks fuel delivery, usage, and et cetera. And then there's other major projects for the buildings, parks, and grounds. It includes restoration of restrooms, building improvements to the Senior Citizens Center. Also IT has funding in there for disaster recovery. And the rest is, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. And Paul and myself are available over the next couple of weeks for when, if you have any questions or want to see details, we can provide that. This was meant to be an overview for next, for action in an ensuing meeting.
What do you think it will cost us for a new system?
Not in the budget. Put a capital request in. Any questions today?
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Don.
Supervisor?
No.
Thank you all.
Could you just explain that one more time? The reason the debt service will equal out is why? Or flatten out?
Well, we have expiring, existing debt.
Right.
That's now expiring.
Right.
And those, they might have been at higher interest rates and we've taken those into account. And those, as they phase out and decline, the new debt that we're bringing on is going to come into play. And as we level off our borrowings, ultimately, it's going to be, if for example, it's, we believe the right size of our debt, outstanding debt is $20 million, then you'll have X amount of debt service that'll just...
Stay the same.
Stay the same, ultimately, that, that's the goal. You know, as they say, budgets are made to be broken. But I think at least it sets a direction and a tone for this board and future boards that the plan for the town is to right-size its outstanding debt and have a level debt service and avoid spikes in borrowings and spikes in debt service. Hope's in play.
And again, you said we have the lowest debt of any town?
You do.
Yeah.
Yep. The only one I think lower is...
Shelter Island.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's the size of that table.
Understandable.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you all.
See ya, thank you. Now I'll move to go into executive session, sorry.
Second. All in favor?